We don't know who you are. I think we're short. Do we have one more? That's okay. Oh, wait, keep coming.
There we go. Thank you. We're good.
Yeah, good, good.
I know, right?
I'm headed here.
Okay, it's four thirty. I'd like to call the governing board working session to order for August twenty ninth at the Jerry Robin facility. This will be our work study session for August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three. All five board members, President Fixler, Aguirre, Kenyon, Parks, and myself, Michael Todd. Next up will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Board Member Aguirre, Kenyon, and you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, our next item will be this is item one point three, the AASA Spring two thousand twenty three scores.
Go ahead. Okay, well, this evening, we are going to spend some time digging into one data set, which is AASA, in both ELA and mathematics. We're going to do that at a very high level tonight. We're going to look together at district level proficiency compared to the state. We will also look at grade level proficiency compared to last year and any percent point changes. We're going to compare state level passing rates by grade level to each school's grade level passing rates, and again, show any detailed percent point change. And finally, we're going to look at a comparison of our schools compared to one another and their passing rates in both ELA and math. One of the things I'd like to do before we start is I really want you to consider how this process is similar to what we ask our teachers to do when they compare their classroom data with other teachers in their grade level. They're very vulnerable in doing that, and they stay focused on what the data is showing. And then we work to move through to help with best practice action plans so that everyone on the grade level is successful. So I just, I want you to feel that a little bit because it's something we ask our teachers to do, and you're going to experience that tonight together. We also don't use data as a hammer. Instead, we use it as a highlighter. So, no pun intended, but we are going to be using our highlighters tonight. We would like to highlight successes that we can replicate and scale across the district and school sites and grade levels. And then we also want to highlight areas that we know need improvement at the district and or site level. And you're going to see that there, we do need improvement, and we're going to focus on some of those areas with you this evening. So if you will open up your handy dandy folder on the right-hand side, I'd just like you to take out all of the papers that are on the right-hand side, and we're going to go through them individually. So the first one is just an opening. You can put that to the back or the side. Let's look at the first visualization table. So. Let me pause and make sure everybody's got their materials. We're good? Okay.
Excited.
Check your neighbor, check your neighbor. Okay. The first visualization table is actually showing all of our students in third grade through eighth grade, okay, and their passing rates compared to last year's passing rates on AASA. So if you look at the left-hand side of the chart, you're looking at ELA. The blue bar is representative of two thousand twenty-two, and the orange bar is representative of two thousand twenty-three. If you see the red dotted line, that is actually the state passing rate, okay? So that's the average passing rate of the state of Arizona in ELA and the average passing rate of the state of Arizona in math. Couple of things I want to point out to you here is that our AASA data from last year to this year is essentially unchanged, right? You're going to see very little movement there. The same is true for the state of Arizona. So we are following the state trend with relatively unchanged data. If you are wondering about how did the state perform last year, because it's not on here, you can write these numbers down. In ELA last year, the state was at thirty-eight percent proficient. And then in math last year, the state was at thirty-one. So again, do you see how that's minimal movement? Another thing I want you to notice when you're looking at this is that our ELA performance is very close to the state average, right? Our district ELA performance is very close to the state average. However, the district's math overall average remains substantially lower than the state's average. Does everybody see that? Okay. And let's also take in note, we did something at the end of last year because we knew we needed a different resource, right, that was aligned. So that is now implemented, and we're looking to see how that's going to support our students and teachers with academic performance, okay? All right, let's flip to the next chart. In the next chart, here's what you're going to see. You are viewing the passing rates across the grade levels and their comparison in percent points changed. So let's look at this together. So you see the subject on top is ELA, the subject on the bottom is math. You see grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, and the far right-hand side is showing a change in percent points. So if we're looking at sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade in ELA, we are seeing a positive change in percent points. Okay, quiz, let's see if you're looking at this data. How many points change did eighth grade have from last year to this year?
Three point seven.
Three point seven, exactly. Okay. So we're seeing a successful, we're seeing increase in our upper grades in sixth, seventh, and eighth, and we're seeing actually a decrease, right, in percent points changed. Third, fourth, fifth, we're going to call that a wash, right? Actually, yeah, fifth, we'll call it wash.
Ms. Sam, you might by just asking a question. When we look at the twenty-three results of the grade three, what we're really talking about are last year's second graders, for two years ago's second graders.
You are. So these are not.
You can't compare twenty-two to twenty-three because they're different kids.
They are not cohorts. You are correct in saying that. They are not cohorts. They are not the same group of kids. This is saying the third grade kids in my class last year performed this way, and the third grade kids in my class this year performed this. Does that make sense? I had two different groups of kids. Yeah, great connection there. Okay, in math, you will see, again, we're highlighting successes and then those areas that we need to dive into deeper, but you will see our third graders had a slight increase in percent points change from last year to this year. So did our sixth graders and our seventh graders. Really, fourth and fifth, it's a wash. It's not significant. Thank you, statistically significant is a tongue twister, and then eighth grade decreased slightly.
Snap talking.
Okay, all right, we're going to flip, and we're going to do a quick activity. So this is where, get ready. Okay. This is where your highlighters are going to come in handy. So on this slide, this is really adding in the state level passing rates by grade level, okay, for two thousand twenty-two, and also the individual schools and their grade level passing rates. So just so we're all reading it correctly, just follow along one line with me. So starting at the top, we have third grade, right? What is the state proficiency rate?
Forty-one percent.
Great. What is our district proficiency rate?
Thirty-nine percent.
Great. And then what is Australia's third grade proficiency rate?
Sixty percent.
Okay, good. So you see how you can follow it all the way across? Here's what we want to, here's what I want to do with your highlighters. In green, I would like you to highlight areas of success, like, oh, wow, that really stands out, right? That's much higher than the state average, and anything else that you see as a success. In orange, I want you to highlight areas for improvement. Okay, I want you to do this individually first, and then we're going to partner up. Then go ahead and do the same thing for math. Okay, so I know not all of you are completely done, but for time's sake, okay, just digging deeper, you should start to see some patterns across schools. You might also see patterns across grade levels. So what I'd like you to do is with a person next to you, kind of compare what you saw, and you're just having a conversation, right? Still high level, very high level. What do you see in the data that you just were highlighting?
And there's like some parameters. Sixth and seventh. But then there's a huge draw. So.
Liberty also has. So they have, Liberty has fifth, sixth, and seventh. That's title school. LBA is the title school.
Is it? Okay, I didn't realize it was.
So, so, Mark, what are they doing? Right? What's Liberty doing?
And those. Because these are going to be the numbers for this year.
Yeah, that's how.
At the end.
That's two outliers in ELA.
But I think once per year, you know, and we have a great adoption system and the training that comes.
So ideally. But I've always wished it would be seen.
The question is, we have to be closer together.
Whatever they're. Why campus, why aren't we going to create? If we thought what they're doing, that whatever needs from them, stop what you're doing. We're going to do what needs to be. At math, I don't, I really don't know what you're saying.
Okay, so if we could come back together, just high level, okay, this is like you're in a classroom, it's called cold calling people, okay? It means you have an answer, and you're thinking about your answer, but I'm going to call on anybody, right? Get ready. This is how it's going to go. So be ready to share a success and an area of opportunity that you saw within the data. Okay? Ms. Fixler? You get to go first.
Well, the colors are really, really pretty. No, we saw a bunch of stuff, obviously. The successes, Australia Mountain, nice job. Anyway, what really stood out, at least to me in our discussion, is the inconsistency. I mean, we are all over the place on the different campuses in different grade levels. We would hope that we'd be pretty close all the way across the district. There would be variation, but it would be closer than sixty-seven percent in Westar and fourteen percent in Freedom. That is a big difference.
Good. Let's hear from somebody else. Mr. Kenyon, are you willing to share?
Of course. Similar to what Paul said, I, there's just, the numbers are all over the place, and obviously, there's definitely some campuses that outperformed and did really well and that held the district's numbers up, and some that kind of fell behind. I did, you know, some of the successes, Australia Mountain, Westar, even Las Briesas were doing really well. And I'm just curious, some of these numbers, especially in the math, I mean, we got one percent, two percent, you know, the very next grade level for Freedom. You have fifth, fifth grade has one percent, sixth grade has sixteen percent. Huge, huge gaps there, kind of figuring out what's going on in some of these.
Yeah. So was it hard for you to stay looking only at success and areas of opportunity? Was your mind wondering, like, I wonder what's happening? I wonder why, what might be the cause of, right? That's, that's really hard when you analyze data, to stay factual only, right? And then we move to really asking the question of what caused these outcomes, right? So a little bit of information that I want to share with you, Brian and I were talking about, you know, there are some things that we have zero control over, right? A family that has two working members in their family and does not have as much time as a family that doesn't have two working, two working parents, right? That, no control. You don't have control over that. The teachers don't have control over that, right? So we really focus our teachers and our principals and our administrators on what can you control, right? You can't control that, so what can you control? Some of the causations of data are centered around these five things. Curriculum, right? So the design and the implementation of curriculum, which we know. Instruction, the instruction that is happening in the classroom, the methods that teachers are using, the materials and the resources. Teachers, their knowledge, their skills, their experience and longevity, as well as disposition, right? So skill and will, you'll hear principals talk about that on their campuses. Also, students, their knowledge, their skills, their disposition, how long they've been with us, right? Their experience with us. And then also, also infrastructure. So what do the schedules look like, right? What does the programming look like? What do the resources, again, look like? So when you think about what caught, what may have caused these results, I really just want you to frame yourself around those five things. That's what we have to continue to dig deeper in on, right? And I'm going to remind you, this is one data set, one piece of data. You all have seen Acadians, Illuminate, Achieve Three Thousand, Dream Box, right? We have multiple pieces of data that we have to triangulate and say, okay, now that we have all of these things, what are we going to do? Right? Because if we just look at data and we don't move to action, that's called insanity. We're going to do the same thing over and over again, and what's going to happen? Get the same results. Right? Get the same results. So let's check your understanding. Go to the next page. Does your highlighted paper look somewhat like this?
Ms. Kim, before we leave, can I ask one more question? Is it the AASA that determines our grade ABC?
It is, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. But you are correct. So this, this should look similar to you. What this is showing is, again, the percent change, right? The percent change either to the positive or the negative by grade level in comparison to the state average at that grade level. Okay, and this was, you're probably like, gosh dang it, she made me highlight that, and she did the work already? Yes, I did. Right? I just wanted you to feel that as we were moving through. The final, the final visualization that I just want to share with you is a comparison. So a lot of you had said, well, we have some schools that are doing much better than others, right? So this shows you, on the left-hand side in blue, our ELA passing rates by school comparatively in grades three, eight combined, and our math passing rates by school comparatively in grades three, eight combined. Okay? A question that came up is, do we know which of our schools are Title One schools? Yeah, five of them, okay? And if you need to asterisk them, that's Blue Horizons, Freedom, Las Briesas, Liberty, and Rainbow Valley. Okay, so we know that the demographics at those schools are quite different than the demographics at our more affluent schools, which are Australia Mountain and Westar. Okay? Questions?
What is, what is the state consider good?
What does the state consider?
Forty, fifty, sixty?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a great question. So, you know, if the state average is only forty percent, right? Then if you are meeting state average at forty percent, they consider that good. But, but let's, let's just think about that. That's not good enough, right? Forty percent is not good enough. Our job doesn't stop until a hundred percent of our students are proficient, and that, that's what we have to aim for. I mean, yes, does it seem impossible? Yeah, but that's the goal.
And those, and those cut points for letter grades are being determined as we speak. There's probably, there may be one more little adjustment, meaning a cut point, what makes it really good or not so good? What makes it an A or a B? And so we'll be bringing that back to the board October, November, as soon as we know.
Yeah, the cut, the cut points are being determined this month in September by the State Board of Education. And then we will get results of how we performed towards meeting those cut points the end of September, no, the end of October, the end of October. And then they will go public the first week in November. So we will know what schools are As, Bs, Cs, Ds, or Fs.
And then we know what the state considers good or really good. So you almost have to get the one hundred to ninety, ninety to eighty, you know, you have to get that kind of out of your mind. The state will determine, yeah, okay, well, fifty-five percent or whatever is an A school or what have you. So we'll bring that back to you guys for sure.
So clearly, you would want to say that your Title One schools are the ones that are left behind.
There's a larger gap.
But we have an outlier.
We do have an outlier.
Within the district. And so one recommendation that I would assume is being looked at is what is Las Briesas doing being a Title One? And hopefully, Blue Horizons, Freedom, Liberty, and Rainbow Valley, they can all get together to greater understand what, what's happening. Because the demographics realistically should be closer.
That is an accurate statement.
I just have one thing that I kind of discovered here. And this has been a trailing data, but what do we, the math is a whole new program.
And this is a bit of trailing data, but when do we, um, the math is a whole new program. When do we really start getting an idea how, how we're trending? With the new math program, uh, cause I see a lot of the, the area, so.
Yeah, so Katie, you can talk about when we give our trimester assessment, I think that is in November.
Yeah, um, November fifteenth is the end of the trimester assessment window. Um, so we would get that dated back probably the third week of November.
Thank you, and then we've put some things in place though even before then, then with the use of the new, um, primary instructional resource, which has common formative assessments. Do you wanna speak about that?
So within the new resource, we have common formative assessments at the section level within a unit. So there could be three sections, section A, B and C. They have an assessment after each of those sections and they have a unit assessment to gauge where their students are falling in mastery. But they also have end of lesson assessments. So they can be monitoring and adjusting daily based on their end of lesson assessments. And the cool thing about the benchmarks at the end of the trimesters, it's only teaching what was taught in that trimester to see where we're at.
So it's not like a moving target, right? Um, I do-
Ms. Camp, another thing that, uh, Governor Parks, the, the assessment isn't different. And so what we'll see, we have one variable on the math. The only difference is that we have a new program. So we're gonna really be able to see what that program does.
Right.
Cause that's the only difference.
Well, we have a couple variables, we just switched to a four-day week. So that is, that is also what, I mean, you know-
Okay, so we have two variables.
That's, that's going to-
They're having three.
Yeah.
But it should tell us what's, if the math program worked.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think there's a lot of great things we're doing and during the board meeting, you'll see the professional development plan and a lot of it is geared towards math.
Yep.
Here you know why, because we're making data-driven decisions. And we have new materials that are in the teacher's hands to equip them in math to better meet the needs of our schools. So I think that the points are, are very well made and we wanted to bring this to you guys so you could see, these are our spring results. And I appreciate what Mrs., what Mrs. Camp said, we don't sit on our hands. Uh, nothing is ever good enough for our kids. Uh, we know our teachers are working hard, our principals are, and, and perhaps we need to be smarter and perhaps we need to be more focused in what we're doing to really get the outcomes that we need. And so I'm optimistic that, uh, that we're gonna be trending in the right direction here, here very soon. So Natasha, anything else on that one?
I think that's all for me, unless you guys would like homework.
Well, I, I just have a, a, a suggestion.
Sure.
Um, I, I, Dr. Monroe, your point's well taken. It appears to me that we're just not delivering the instruction consistently across the, the district. So I assume that one thing that we're doing is making sure that the, the understanding of how these different instructional models are being delivered is consistent throughout.
We are doing that and we are also, I know people feel like we need to fill gaps, right? But if we keep that mentality of filling gaps, we are always going to be teaching not to the correct level of difficulty. And our children are measured at the proficient level on this assessment. So if you are teaching here and they are never exposed to this level, this is, I mean, this is like going into the test blind, right? We have to be teaching at the correct level of difficulty. And I know that our, our teachers know that and, and they are working very hard on that, but they also care deeply about gaps that have been created. And they want to fill those gaps, right? But we, we've gotta just, it's, it's just this relentless pressure and balance of, um, making sure that we're giving them exposure to the correct level of difficulty.
Yeah, it doesn't seem that we're, well, and I don't know this for a fact, but one thing that could be looked at is the rigor that we're expecting in the classroom. And it's gotta match standards.
Yes.
The rigor in the classroom's gotta be there. And the rigor and the standard is very high.
Very high.
And the resource really helps with aligning all teachers with grade level rigor because it gives a synopsis of where kids are at and where they're moving and what you should be seeing aligned to that standard or that lesson or that unit. It really is a support for teachers within content development.
Are we expecting all of our teachers to do their own forms of assessments? Or are we just using the ones that we, that have been produced for us?
I think both. Teachers have the autonomy to-
Right, yeah, we think, yeah.
Yeah, construct their own common formative assessments or to revise-
He raises a hand.
Yeah, revise the one provided or use the one provided.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, if I may, just really fast, we're on, I, I just, I believe this is the first time that we've ever taken a dive at a board level. So I'm sure that presented a bit of a bunch of comfort for you comparing to this because all the-
Vulnerability, right?
And, uh, so thank you for taking on the challenge, trying to volunteer and volunteer, however, see what's out. But, but thank you for that and I think that leads great insight to what we're doing here in the district for transparency. Some of us are gym rats, some of us are not. I think, you know, we all look at ourselves in the mirror and think, oh, that's a million dollars. Uh, but when we stand at the group room and look at it, then we can say, oh, maybe it's not a million dollars anymore. Um, but now together as a team, we can work as a whole team. And as the board is making decisions, we're now able to see some of these numbers and understand and the picture becomes more clear as we start evolving to higher standards. So with that, I would like to congratulate, although these numbers are not hundred percents, I don't think they're hundred percents anywhere in the state. We have some very good successes throughout. I don't want that to be overshadowed by, by the other ones. I know that there's not a person in this district that is wanting to add low numbers, everybody's shooting for high, so.
Correct.
With that, thank you for joining us staff and, and being vulnerable, uh, to the board, to the public and, and to each other. So thank you for that. Uh, next we'll be on one point four, the Liberty Road discussion. And we have some members from the, in the audience as well, and we'll be here to participate in this if we need it.
Yes, I wanna, I wanna point out Ron, it's in the audience from the city of Buckeye. Uh, David is over here from DLR Architects and then Anthony and Mike from FCI. I wanna chat with the board a little bit, uh, and have a little bit discussion. And Beth, uh, has been involved with regards to Liberty Road, which is this one quarter mile road here in between the transportation and, uh, Liberty Elementary School as well as the, the district office. So let me tell you a quick, uh, quick story, uh, cause I've been getting up to speed on all of this, being new. But, um, Liberty Road, uh, was a county road. Um, for a long time it was maintained by Maricopa County. And, uh, it was not a new roadway, as, as the board members know. Uh, drainage was an issue, there was a few other things that were an issue. Three or four years ago, the county and the city negotiated the roadway and it was decided that the city of Buckeye would take over the road, okay? Um, and both sides of the road are the city of Buckeye. So the city, the city of Buckeye wants everything to be up to code, up to their standards. So, which was different from before because before it was the county that was maintaining the road. And so we're, we're kind of plopped in the middle of that, of that change. There was a letter written, um, in about two thousand and twenty, um, where, uh, superintendent asked the city of Buckeye to, um, to push, to push out, uh, the maintenance of the road, um, up to city standards so that we could do, uh, Liberty Elementary School. And so that letter was written a, a few years ago. And so you can see that the road is kind of what it is now. However, what that does is it doesn't remove us from being in the middle of this. So as we look at getting going on our transportation building, which is what we're, we're doing, we have a two-point-three million dollar price tag on Liberty Road to bring it up to the city of Buckeye standards. So in your folder is this nice little chart and this is just something I've kind of put together, Beth and I put together. So we actually went to meet with the city of Buckeye. And we talked to them about, hey, what are our options here? Will you grant us an exception? We can't, it's gonna be really hard to afford the two-point-three million dollars for this quarter mile stretch of the road cause that will, that will wipe out our adjacent ways, it'll take away from the transportation center, our future elementary school. So what are some options that we have, will you work with us? And the city was great, it was a really good meeting, Ron and his staff, we, it was really productive, was we kind of brainstormed a few things. And you guys, if I misspeak, jump in and Beth knows and correct me. So I kind of summarized some of our options here and this is kind of what I wanted to discuss with the board and tell you kind of where I was leaning. If we need to agendize it, we cannot, I put it on the next board agenda to vote on. But the options that we saw were, um, number one, we could privatize the road. Okay? What that means is we become the owners of that road. We don't need it to meet, uh, uh, well, we, we take on all the maintenance, everything in the future, we privatize the road. And you'll notice on the little chart, I put some little pluses and minuses. Those were things that kind of Beth and I and the group saw as kind of pros and cons of doing that. Uh, we'd be responsible for all the long-term maintenance, for all the price increases and all those kind of things. In the middle column is, we could pay it now. We could find a creative way to pay the two-point-three million dollars. However, um, the positive would be, it would be done. But you could see some of the negatives, would it would deplete our monies for the transportation complex, um, some from the new elementary eight. And then it also kind of clears out and zero balances our adjacent ways, which is something we don't want. Where I'm leaning and what I wanted to talk to the board about was the city was gracious enough to say, we would be open, Dr. Monroe and team, if you guys issued, if you guys wrote us another letter, you could push back the road improvement all the way until the final phase of the development here, which could be three, four, five, six, seven years, um, to do that improvement. Which would buy us a lot of time, like you'll notice in, in kind of this little chart, it allows time for new development. What that means is we have these farms nearby. Who's to say something's not gonna change in the next few years with, uh, these farms that, that impact the road here? It allows times for a decision to be made, uh, throughout the district complex build-out phases over the next few years as we look at this whole new property. It allows time to be able to pass additional voter-approved bonds if needed. We, if the bond fails in November, you know, we have to consider all those contingencies. It allows time to accrue more monies into adjacent ways, which Beth is always reminding me, the more time we have, uh, the more monies are accrued. It also allows more time to decide if we wanna privatize the road and really dig into what are the positives and negatives? And is it in our best long-term financial interest to do that? And then you can see some of the cons are, a, a board would be potentially passing on a future payment or a, a future debt, um, cost escalation over the years. And then as traffic continues to increase, we would have to address that with the, uh, with the, with the city. But I wanted to bring this to the board, tell you the story a little bit, to kind of discuss it briefly, get kind of your thoughts. Um, I, you know, personally, I'm leaning towards thinking through it, to pushing it back until the last phase. But actually, you know, that's kind of a board, I, I just wanna kind of get some direction or some feeling from, from you guys as the board members and some of your thoughts. Or answer questions. And if I can't answer, Beth is here and we have our crew here.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Hey, if we, uh, if we go with the pushback, who maintains the road?
If we go with the pushback, who maintains the road? So-
City.
City? And technically, um, does it have to stay a road? Can we make it a driveway?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I said you're privatizing it. So we, we don't have to have a road there?
Well-
If you privatize the road, then you, 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 you take away, if there's a development that goes in, in the farmer's land, you would, you would, uh, allow you guys to block it so that roads don't have to come through in front of your school.
You're essentially making it a driveway, making it a private. So-
It becomes a driveway, if you privatize it, it becomes a driveway.
So there's no easement laws with that if we privatize?
It just become part of the school property.
Just become pro- part of the school property, right?
It would be released.
Okay. Because there's many other entrances into the, the land over there. And that land's already been tried to be sold as commercial and it's, it didn't happen. Plus vandalize, I don't think are gonna be selling. It's a pretty hot commodity right now, right?
If we privatize the responsible roadway, it would have to continue, you does control, I believe, right?
What kind of control?
Dust control. So we have to keep it paved, so every few years we've got a big asphalt came, coming up to do this.
Yearly? That's how often?
You'd be foxing it every three to five years. If you don't maintain it, it's gonna fall apart and you have to fix it.
Well, the time I worry about, if we push back, who does maintain it? Cause I don't wanna pick up that cost.
So what do you, you think foxing every three to five years and when does it have to be tore up and really redone?
Ten, fifteen, probably. So if you take care of it and it gets used, you gotta have traffic to keep it going.
David, um, when we were deciding on the bus depot, this was one of the issues that was brought up. So we knew that we were gonna be paying for this.
Right.
And that was all encompassed in the cost at the time then.
I, I think-
We, we did.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I agree with you.
We encompassed that two million into the cost of the depot itself. We knew that we were gonna have to pay for this. So-
Right.
The decision was to go ahead and just add that, factor all that in to the actual cost.
I, I don't disagree with that, I think what's changed since then, we've seen a lot more inflation and we haven't up our adjacent, we haven't built, built up enough adjacent ways funds. So now we're in the situation where you're gonna end up using bond dollars to pay for a roadway, which is taking away from the building, which has seen inflation too and less able to do with the money that we have.
Understood. But again, we knew we were paying for it and we went ahead and made the decision to have the bus depot at this location versus up at Rainbow Valley. We actively made that decision. So we can talk about inflation and whatnot, that's something we have no control over. We can't, we don't have a crystal ball. But this two-point-three was all part of that cost. We knew this was gonna happen. So, so I'm not sure what, what's changing. Like whether it was the county or whether it was the city, we as a district, we actively knew that we were gonna have to do this.
But do what, which one, Mark, are you, are you talking about? Privatizing, paying for it now, you're talking about paying for it now?
Yeah.
I think we're just re- reevaluating, the, 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 the opportunity has come up again to think about whether it's private road. Reevaluating the thoughts that we had before.
And Kurt, we, Mr. Kurt, when we looked at this originally at two-point-three million, what's kind of come about now is with the inflationary cost of the building, we're, we need to save some of this two-point-three million that we were originally planning on spinning on roadway to make the building successful because of the inflationary costs there. So we knew this improvement was coming. What we didn't know was all the inflation happening. So we can do this improvement today, we just aren't going to have enough money to cover the inflation of the cost of, of the building itself. So we're looking at extending this down.
Correct, we'd have to scale back the footprint.
So it's just, it's just a discussion here for the board to reevaluate, determine, do we wanna go forward with our original plan, doing all the road improvements, getting that out of the way? And then saying, that's what we did, cause we don't have enough money to build facilities we wanted to? Or do we look to defer this road a little longer? Start putting more money into adjacent ways so we can plan properly for it, have the money? Yes, there could be some more cost, although things are starting to plateau and stabilize out on the inflationary track versus, you know, the last two years. And then we catch it up at another point. So it's just a pause and a reevaluation point of which direction the board wants to go.
What's a, what's a higher tax burden to the public, adjacent ways or the bond?
He's having a hard word.
No, I'm-
Yes, go ahead.
So it's always been the goal of the district to keep the, any bond things at one-point-two-two-
Yeah.
Per a hundred thousand. And so that's what we have done, that we have strategically done that. On adjacent ways is I believe less than one dollar per one hundred thousand.
Okay.
So if we were to push this back, other, out, you know, obviously inflation, we don't know what that's gonna do. Is there any other penalty or anything that we're gonna incur? Is fines, I mean, it sounds like the city of Buckeye is willing to work with us if, and. So my, my point is, was it still gonna be two-point-three million? And it may go up or down depending on inflation, right? But by the time we get done with that thing, by that time, our district will have had four, five- By that time, our district will have had four, five, six years to grow, and we've seen this crazy growth happening. That many, just imagine that many amount of children coming, that much revenue. It seems like we can much more easily cover this later, if we don't have to deal with it now.
Remember, there's nothing in this road that's cheaper than this.
Exactly.
I, I understand that, but my point is, or us as a district, we're growing. Right?
Well, there's a couple of things here we've done great with carryovers. I'm thinking in my head all the things we could pull money from over the next two or three years. We'd have to be really disciplined to make sure that we built that pot up. I mean, is that something that we're, that we're ready to do?
I don't know that we can say that we're growing as a district. Our student numbers are down. They trended down. Right, and to your point exactly, Mr. Parks, nothing gets cheaper, we know that. I can say construction costs are trending lower than what they are. Because we're not making those purchases right now. And we're going to see those construction costs trend down. The only thing that we're not going to see trend down is going to be wages. But materials are darn sure, darn sure coming down.
So we have a, so there's a few options to consider. And a study session, there's no business, there's no decision or anything like that. I am more inclined to issue a new letter with legal, legal counsel. And we can certainly bring that agenda as, bring that to a board meeting. I wanted to bring it to the board for any discussions and bring our team here to answer any questions. Obviously, would it be tonight, it'd be at the next board meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is more about priorities than anything. It is a gross, my opinion, for money bills would be the bus department. We have to offset that at this point to get that, that's what we have to do. I see your point, the offset. I just think, because we have to know that we're not saving any money going this route, so.
Yeah, you pay, you pay now or you pay later?
Right.
You know what I mean? It's just, that's why I put on there, it's on passing on, I don't even know about future debt, but. We just want to be eyes wide open, that's why I wanted to bring it to the board, so we could at least talk about it or put it on another agenda or whatever.
I, I think the other thing in the city is here. If, if we defer this down a little bit, and we have any extra that comes about, we can do this section, I don't think you guys are ever going to complain, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't need to speak for you, but if we say we can do 100 yards of sidewalk and lights, or go whatever, however far, and do that in three or four pieces, we can chew it off that way as well. As we typically, you know, we task our builders and our architects with saving money. We did that in the last round a little bit. We can put that back into it potentially as well. We don't have to do it as a full project, so if we get extra money, we can stair-step that, those improvements, as a possibility. But it was, again, I think Dr. Monroe's issue tonight was to bring it forward for us to reevaluate, just so we didn't end up with a road that potentially not much of a bus park.
I do have a question about adjacent ways. Beth, how does the adjacent ways fund bill? How do we put more money into it?
Every year, we put it out as part of our budget, and we don't spend it.
So we, we're adding to it on a yearly basis?
It feels like your budget balance carries forward with your fund, with your restricted capital. Yeah, if you don't spend it, it carries forward the next year, it's not a use it or lose it.
If we decided to do the pushback, if we gave it a four-year, whatever, let's say a number four-year, we could make adjustments at the board with that budget to feed that a little heavier if we need to, so that's an option.
If we, if we look at, I don't know, our construction partners probably do better. Is it a CPI that can give us a, a little more of an idea of what costs would be in three years, four years? Is that stabilized? I know for a while CPI, everything came off the top. Is that what you guys use for construction too?
It does play a role into it, but yeah, it's historically, 3% is kind of that average escalation or CPI increase year-over-year inflation. Obviously, past over years have extremely exceeded it. Last year was over 12%, this year we're trending closer to 6%, so we're going in that right direction. Inflation is decreasing, costs are still rising, it is not as rising as much, it's plateauing. So, but yeah, the historical.
So we could look at numbers, come back to the board meeting with a kind of a CPI, work with you guys and come up with a kind of a worst-case, best-case scenario of what we're looking at if we defer it two years, three years, four years, 50 years, I'm just joking.
So is there any opportunity with the city, of the city covering the cost of inflation?
No. Yeah, the city, as you guys know, we don't put out the money for that. So it's what you come in and you typically, you do the improvement you have to do, have street improvements as well at that time. So we're just letting you guys keep delaying that, right, tie it to whatever your last phase is. If that's new administration building or whatever it is, move it down.
What exactly are the improvements that the city is requiring that's different from the county itself?
Uh, just, it's a, I don't, I don't recall exactly what the road width is, but it's a, there's a collection road coming through, so it'll be the width that is, and curved under sidewalk, that's it.
Power lines. Power lines going.
Yeah, power lines have to be undergrounded. I think 12, uh, 12K D lines have to be undergrounded.
Okay, so that's the difference between the city and the county then? Sidewalk, power lines. And APS will cover them, power lines, correct? APS will not, that will not be part of APS's responsibility. Even with the city.
Pay on it, yep. The district has to pay.
Interesting.
So.
Okay.
Board members and public, one thing I think to think about this as well is, what the city requires, this is no different with the city requires a developer. They don't, you've got to make improvements. The difference is, the developer charges more for the property to get all that money back. We don't have that ability, we're not, we're not a developer per se. So this is definitely goes out of bond dollars or out of the classroom. I mean, even if it's bond dollars, it's still bringing those sorts of classrooms. And that's, I think, what's really important for the public to also understand. Any developer can just change the price of a house from 400,000, 500,000, make a little extra on putting in the sidewalks and roads. We can't do that. We can't start charging students more to come to school. We can't go to the state and say we need more money per student. So that's, I have, so it puts us in a little bit of a lurch over a developer that's being held to that same standard. So, that's something to, for everybody to understand, that's why this is kind of a tough pill to swallow.
So, why don't we go ahead and get some numbers, put the other ones in there.
All right, we'll move on. Thank you. Uh, 1.5 is the superintendent, Liberty Elementary School District goal criteria and goal input and review.
So if you look again, President Todd, members of the board in the binder, you'll notice the draft, the watermark, the watermark got copied out, I forget, watermarks don't copy, but it should say draft all the way on this. So this is a very rough draft of some school district goals to bring to the board. We would bring this to the next meeting for an approval. I bring it to the board now for some discussion and input. And then also with, with, and after, board members can email me. You'll notice that in these goals, there's four priorities. Those are the priorities of the past strategic plan. The strategic plan we're working under goes from 2020 to 2024. So this is the last year of it. It's kind of a five-prong, it's kind of a five-prong stool, if you will, with five legs, if there is such a thing. But the goals are based on data, some of the survey data from the spring, that get-to-know-you data for Dr. Monroe, meetings with our principals, leaders and cabinet, as well as past strategic plan. And so you'll notice that there's four or five dots, bullet points under each priority as far as goals. Some are a lot more measurable than are others, some are a lot more time-bound than others. Some may extend beyond a year, some may be within the year. The criteria that's referenced is the superintendent's entitled to performance pay. So how does the board determine if the superintendent receives performance pay? So what, what I would, what I'd offer to the board would be, as you can see the criteria, you break those priorities into 25% increments. And if the board feels that some of those goals are met, you can meet up to that 25%. So if the board was to come in the spring and say, Dr. Monroe, we feel good about some of the stuff you've done, you met 50% of your goals, then that would be the amount that would be awarded according to the contract. So that's the criteria that I've offered here, that I'm open to talk to the board about. And then you'll notice under the four priorities, being strategic leadership, high expectations for learning, stewardship of resources and community connections, there's various goals. Natasha just presented on our A double A S A scores. You'll notice under priority two, the first bullet is, increase student achievement on Arizona State Acadians assessments as measured by and compared to the previous years. You'll notice the fourth bullet point down there says, increase all of our schools to an A and B letter grade. So there's this idea of the, the higher tide raises all boats. So when you get up to the superintendent level and the district level, the goals become a little more broad. You also see the high expectations for learning to decrease our discipline referrals in the areas of fighting and aggression, decrease the percentage of students that are chronically absent. There's a few of those goals there. Stewardship of resources, you know, the teacher shortage is a significant factor in education. So we want to increase our employee, employee recruitment rates of quality staff. How are our vacancies this year compared to last year? Are we better, are, are we more full with quality staff? The second bullet point, increase the quality of our custodial landscaping efforts. That's come out loud and clear as we transition. How can we feel like our schools are in a better spot from this point, this year to last year? Increasing our substitute coverage for all classes as compared to last year. So as you scan through this document, you'll notice increases and different measurements. And pretty much, I just want to get the input from the board to massage it, beat it up, say, hey, Dr. Monroe, I don't like this, I really like this, because I really value that. And then I would try to attempt to bring back something that the board could feel confident about and that we could vote on at the next meeting. So I bring this very rough draft to you to look over and scan and give me feedback now. Things that you really like, things you don't like, or language you don't like. And I'll, I'll kind of just let it be quiet and ask any input or questions that you might have.
Dr. Monroe?
Yes.
I noticed that these four areas are broken at 25%, and that's easy math. That's the kind of math that so state teachers do. But there are pieces of this, of these four, that are more valuable to me than others. So we don't need to be locked into that 25%, correct? So if we think that, that the second goal might be the most highest priority, that could be 40%.
Correct, the board can approve the criteria. So this is just the criteria I threw at you, was to divide it up into quarters. But if the board said, high expectations for learning should be 40%, we could certainly do that. And then again, that gives the board a good decision to say, hey, Dr. Monroe, you met all these goals except A, B, and C, and so. So yes, answer your question.
There doesn't seem to be any data when it says, let's say, increase L E S or decrease the percentage of students that are chronically absent. With new 40, we, from what to what, there's no numbers there. And I see that in a couple of these bullets, that there, there doesn't seem to be a, a number. It just seems more of a check-the-box type thing.
Well, I, I wanted to get away from the check-the-box, and I brought this to you because it's a clean, well, I don't know if it's pretty or not, but it's a one-pager. But those numbers would be added, so we know actually what we're shooting for in a longer version. But I just brought this to you tonight because it's a nice, clean, one-page, easy to look at. But yeah, we would add all those, and then what's the proof of measurement? What's the proof of concept out? How do you prove that that happened?
To be interlocated.
Yeah. All your performance indicators from this to this. But yeah, when, if I was to add these, then it turns into a, like a three-page document. So today I just kind of brought you a clean version. I just want to make sure I was on the right track.
Dr. Monroe, is this something that is, looks pretty similar to the previous strategic plan that we had in place? Or kind of close?
Yes, some, some of the goals, yes, because I did look at past. And, and again, to, to remember of Wyers point, last goals would have the goal and then various strategies on how you're going to do it. Okay, so it's like a longer document. But for this conversation, I just wanted to bring the one clean, just, I didn't, you know, again, if the board says, you're on the wrong track. I didn't want to spend way too much time on the wrong track.
You have to let me go over this in detail, I'll.
What's that?
I need to go over this more detail, so I'll email you.
Okay.
I have a question on priority number two, increase L E S B schools to A or B letter grade. We don't have a timeframe on that, but, and, and that's a moving, it's a little bit of a moving target, I think, with the state. The thing that happened, I, I believe our neighbors had a couple of A schools one year because of some growth, and now it's a blast, so it's probably not coming back. So would it be more appropriate to change that to a percentage of overall? Maybe like a credit score where we use the state testing and. Tell, help me get this down, there's a couple of tests up here that I just lost track of, Acadians testing?
Acadians.
So maybe we do something of that nature and say, we want to see a percentage of growth every year. Would that be more, would that be more fair? Because even if we hit an A, does that mean we just quit? Or do we just keep getting better and better, so we become an A+, A++? You know, the sky's the limit on how, how great we can become. So, just a question for that. I think it might be a little more fair for you because, not to bring up the past.
Mr. President.
But, one second, please. It, it might be pretty hard to bring some of the schools up to a B.
It's a good, no, it's a good point. And again, I'm in an interim contract for a year.
Right.
And, yeah, no, so that's very good input, very good input.
I think the advantage of having an A and B is it's a common thing that is shared throughout all the districts. If we go to our own, we can't, we can't tell our people how we compare to everybody else. I know if I were a realtor, I'd want to be able to say that, oh, this is an A district. And we, we won't be able to say that if that's not what we're, if that's not what we're, we're observing.
My concern.
I, I think we should keep this A and B.
My only concern is, I understand it, as, as Dr. Schuff actually explained to me, you can become an A one year for a lot of growth, and then if you plateau, you can drop to a C the next year. You can still have the same scores. So if you're running at an 80%, you're an A one year and you're a C the next, because you didn't grow up.
And that's okay with me.
Okay.
As long as Litchfield is doing the same thing that we are. As long as, as Cartwright is doing the same things we are. I, I think we need to be able to compare ourselves with everybody else.
But I don't think, there's, there's too many variables to that A, B.
But it's the same rules for everybody.
Effectively, I think we're talking about two different things. This is about his, about the evaluation.
Oh, no, I'm talking about.
Yeah.
The score that we still target on grade card.
This is more about his achieving.
Yeah, for him, because it could change. He could be doing really good, but if we, if we get kids up real high because of growth one year, because we've adopted a new curriculum, it really takes off. All of a sudden, we get this big growth, we become an A, and the next year, we might have all these numbers at 80%, we're way over the state average, but now we're just, we didn't grow, so it's a terrible fault.
If I'm the superintendent, I'm going to know I've got that growth, and I'm going to do what I can to make sure that it stays an A. I understand what you're saying, I don't agree with that.
And any, any input, like Board Member Park said, that you get, if you guys want to dig in and spend a little time or say, hey, you missed the mark on this, we need to do this for safety, or we need to do this, I would, I would appreciate that input. Because I'd like to bring back something that the board can feel confident about moving forward, that we can vote on later in next month. And that, that was all, okay, so talk.
All right, any other comments from the board on that? Okay, if we can create some, that's a discussion. Okay, next up is item 1.6, the Westar Elementary gifted and multi-age gifted creates 7-8 updates.
Yeah, President Todd, members of the board, so I'm going to turn it over to Natasha and staff. They're going to give us an update of where we are with regards to our, our gifted program, the 7-8 mag program that's located at Westar. We had a very well-attended gifted stakeholder meeting last week. I'm really excited that we're going to be starting a gifted parent group moving forward into the future so that this communication with the public can continue to happen, so we can do what's right for our kids. There was a lot of good input given, and the board is aware of the vacancy we have at, at, at Westar which regards to the multi-age gifted. So the purpose now is just to bring the board up to date as far as, I know people were working a lot on Friday and Saturday and those kind of things, kind of see where we are, so Natasha.
Sure. So just as Dr. Monroe was saying, we did have a very well-attended gifted public stakeholder forum. During the Q and A portion of the meeting, we heard feedback on the 7-8 mag program. And really an interest for an, an immediate solution, as well as, we heard some concerns about the gifted cluster model, and then also proposal for additional language to be added as revision to our scope and sequence. So just wanted to. um, as revision to our scope and sequence, so just wanted to talk with you all about some immediate actions and then, um, some, some long-term actions, uh, from, from that meeting. Um, immediate actions that happened right after the meeting, the participants that voiced concerns regarding the cluster model um, during the meeting did receive a follow-up phone call from Ms. Finn, um, as an opportunity to further elaborate and understand what support may be needed moving forward. Um, Ms. Finn also sent a Google form to all identified, um, gifted cluster teachers um, seeking input on the need for additional training and or resources to further support them in servicing gifted, gifted students in the cluster model at their schools. Um, Ms. Finn, um, also created and invited all gifted cluster teachers to her Google classroom, which is filled with resources and units to support differentiated learning, uh, for gifted students. On Friday, uh, I worked collaboratively with Mr. Bogart, Ms. Lovelace, Ms. Crowley, who I see in, in the audience, thank you for coming, um, and myself to put together a temporary, uh, plan for the seven eight mag students. Um, Mrs. Crowley has graciously agreed to teach seventh and eighth grade mag students um, in a new schedule which would, um, provide them a block of mathematics and also a block of English Language Arts during the instructional day in the smaller, um, mag setting of gifted only students. Um, again, um, instructed by, uh, Mrs. Crowley, the seventh and eighth grade mag students would continue to join their uh, grade level peers in science and social studies and champs on a daily basis. Um, today, um, all seventh and eighth grade mag students were contacted by Ms. Lovelace and myself about this option. Um, and some, some of those, uh, parents were not ready to make that decision without speaking to their child first. Um, so, uh, they will be giving me a final decision, um, of opting in to that program or remaining in the gifted cluster um, uh, for the time being. A timeline was also given to our mag parents to let them know that, um, we will be, uh, exerting every effort to fill the vacancy in the seven eight mag, um, position. And when that teacher is hired, there will be another transition, um, for the seven eight mag students to be moved into that classroom with the new teacher. And some further, um, further out next steps, uh, gifted campus leads and the coordinators will review the feedback on the scope and sequence um, in an upcoming, uh, gifted lead meeting to make recommendations to the superintendent for changes and updates based on suggestions brought forward in the public forum. Uh, Ms. Finn will analyze cluster teacher feedback and develop a new cohort for obtaining their gifted provisional endorsement. We are also working with, um, teachers that have their current provisional endorsement, getting and obtaining their full um, gifted standard, um, endorsement. Um, we are working with an outside consultant, um, receiving quotes on what that might cost us to do in order to support um, teachers in obtaining that, and we also do have, um, a free, um, synchronous and asynchronous opportunity, um, through, uh, collaborative of, I think it is, uh, Washington Elementary School District, Avondale Elementary School District.
Alhambra.
Alhambra School District, so they've, they also have this need and have started to put together, um, asynchronous and synchronous courses, and they're willing to accept participants from our district, um, in that which I'm just ecstatic about. It is online, yes. In addition, educational service, educational services will coordinate a future, uh, gifted parent group to further engage our, our gifted parents. We did hear a need for that, and then, um, we anticipate that, uh, there may need to be a special board meeting, uh, this week. Um, in order to, um, have a personnel action item, uh, because of Ms. Crowley graciously accepting, um, to further educate more, more students and, uh, potentially give up her prep to do that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we have the data that shows the performance of the students of seventh, eighth graders in cluster versus seventh, eighth graders in mag?
I do not have that off the top of my head, but I can get that.
Could we have that, please?
Absolutely.
I'd be curious to see what that data shows.
Gifted.
The, the student achievement.
Yeah, gifted cluster students versus multi-age gifted student, uh, proficiency levels, okay. Absolutely.
And if I can just jump in for two seconds, we will still continue all the recruiting efforts that we have been doing as far as advertising um, everywhere you can think of, Indeed, Jobs dot com, um, we've, um, worked with Grand Canyon University, none of that will stop. So this is in addition to and continuing, um, with Natasha's, Natasha's work, so we're, we're still collaborating with her and continuing to advertise, um, all over the place.
Ms. Camp?
Yes.
Are the social studies and science classes with the mag students that are in seventh, eighth, are those cluster classes?
I don't believe they are, they're not, okay.
And the second question I have is, uh, it appeared to me from the, the forum that the, the issue that we're running into, at least one of the major issues we're running into, is it's very difficult to find somebody that is highly qualified in English Language Arts and highly qualified in math and has a gifted standard endorsement. What if it was two people? I realize it would drive Mr. Bogart crazy because it does play havoc with his master schedule. But what if we had a, a, a highly qualified ELA, highly qualified math, and they taught half-day in math?
I do think that's an option, I, I wouldn't want to say that's off the table, I do think that's potentially an option.
Seems to me to be, uh, and I, I do sympathize with what it does to your master schedule, but you would also lower class sizes over at Westar. Because we'd have a half-day more of math and science somewhere. Secondary.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of those options are on the table, that creative, that creative thinking, yeah.
That's something that requires board action, but we need to have it on an agenda to pursue it in that vein as opposed to one person, let's go two.
Not, that's, I, not, I don't believe so, um, if we have similar positions with job descriptions that are the same, but if we had to do another job description, then we would have to have that board approved, but if we have similar teachers, if we have a seventh grade uh, math teacher with a good job description for the middle school, and that's just reduced to point five halftime, we could use that.
That'd be nice with seven eight. Yeah. Certified, so, okay, that seems to be a worth looking into, I mean.
Yeah, we're trying to overturn, you know, uncover every rock, and, uh, I know that there's been a lot of work and, uh, there's some parents who aren't very satisfied, but we're working really hard to try to resolve this issue and, and, uh, meet our students' needs, we're in week four. So please be ready this week.
Well, we're so blessed to have Ms. Crowley, who, who first of all was, was actually certified in those areas, so she could teach it for us. And I don't want to stop her, because I think one of the problems that we're seeing in, in the cluster class is that it's really hard for a, uh, a classroom teacher to also come up with that acceleration and compacting and so on that we need to do with our, our uh, gifted students. And it would be nice to have our, Ms. Crowley in the classrooms working with those cluster teachers as opposed to in the classroom working with the kids and instructing.
Is, one other question, is there any, do we have any data of our eighth grade gifted students when they, what their performance looks like their first year at high school, are we privy to that, any of that data? As to if our program, what we currently have, if it's currently working?
Uh. I don't, I don't know for privy to it, we could probably.
We might.
We can connect with.
They have to volunteer to us.
Yeah.
But that, that's a great question, we don't know how our kids do in high school, I'd like to know how all of our kids do when they get to high school.
What we. Ms. Crowley, do we have that, do you know?
No.
The only thing you can currently look at is just.
Grades.
Our, our, well, our A A S A schools, scores can be flushed out even.
They don't take A A S A though, at the high school level, so they would be.
But, oh, you said on to high school, I thought you meant at our, how effective are our current students in the mag? I'm just clarifying, um, what I heard over there was mag versus being in gen, gen and cluster.
Yes, and then a second data question, all of our gifted students going to the high school level, what does that data look like? I mean, I think we could get grade, you know, grade data, or if they're placing into AP courses.
So that's basically the question I have, right, is, are these gifted children, are they continuing into accelerated classes at the high school level?
Well, I, I can only.
So that would be data that I'd look for.
If you speak a little bit, the high school doesn't really do much, my daughter transitioned from here, the mag program into high school. She spent four years in high school learning nothing, and she will continue to tell you that, she learned nothing at the Buckeye High School. She stopped, her learning stopped, and they did not accommodate, uh, at all for, for the gifted students over there, it was, to be quite honest, the best thing.
So if we could get that data, I think that would help a little bit to make some decisions.
I think Governor Bar brings up a great point, and the, the double A S A is a good test, I mean, for most kids, it gives you a lot of good information, but our gifted kids should max that out without any problem. But I don't think we know if our gifted kids are growing with us, I don't think we have an assessment that tells us. Is there any way we could look for something that would give us some kind of assessment on how? How do you, how do you assess when, when the kid's already doing far above it?
Let's connect with the high school and see what
Yes.
data markers we can get, their freshman year and A double S A and all those kind of.
And I also know that Ms. Finn has a great network of, um, gifted collaborative that you, you attend quarterly for.
Yes.
And we can ask how they're doing it as well.
I'd like to know how we, how we and can we track our gifted kids and their growth.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you, you wanted to give us homework, huh?
No, no, you gave me homework.
Okay, uh, with that, we will take a motion to adjourn the work study session, give everybody a break for a few minutes.
And I move, we adjourn the work study session.
Yes, there you go.
Okay, I'll motion on second.
Second.
On second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Name the post. Okay, we'll show it, uh, five fifty-two or adjourned, and we'll start back in about five hours.